I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. This is Thursday, April 14th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And first order of business is pledge allegiance to the flag, if everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the Secretary take your roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls.
Here.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Okay, next item is approval of agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
I would like to request the addition of an additional agenda item under new business, the consideration of a mixed-use overlay map drafting.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll add that to new business. We need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Motion to approve amended agenda.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Take your roll, please.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next, we need approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 10th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes. Is there any comments or corrections? Hearing none, would you take your roll?
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next item, public comment on non-agenda items only. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? If so, would they stand? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on. We have no business items, we have other business and discussion. First item is 2021 Annual Report and 2022 Action Plan. Review of the draft report and action plan. We'll start out with comments from our consultant, Mr. Ortega.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Before you, as a draft of the, of this annual report of all of our, the planning commission's activities the past calendar year, and also a proposal for some actions that the planning commission could consider. This is something that's required by the state statute, that at the conclusion of a calendar year, the planning commission prepare a report that is submitted to the legislative body, in this case, the city council, for their review. And it's mainly to keep them up to date on all the accomplishments of the planning commission, and also your opportunity to outline additional tasks beyond your standard tasks of site plan reviews and rezonings and those sort of activities. Some additional tasks you might want to undertake that's under your purview in this count, in this year, 2022. So the, so the, it's pretty straightforward, you know, we go over, I just, you know, you list the amount of times we've met, our, our membership, the different reviews, both site plans and specialty uses and rezonings. And then, of course, for the planning commission, and also you've undertaken a lot of discussion with regards to zoning ordinance amendments. So I just outlined those accomplishments. So that's the report. And then the action plan is just a list of activities, once again, that you could undertake. And probably the most important to out, point out is the first, is the master plan review. The Planning Enabling Act does require a municipality to review its plan every five years. And so it would be something, a task that we would take up during this calendar year to go through a review process of the plan. And I can go over that in more detail now or at a later date with regards to that. But this is your opportunity to let me know if there's any changes you'd like to see in this document, or if there's additional items you want to consider and that sort of thing. I can make any revisions you request.
Any questions or comments?
Mario, would it be appropriate to cite any observations regarding what the city could do better to be welcoming to business? I don't know if that's within, I guess I'll defer to the chair here on whether that's really within our charter, but it's a question I...
Um, I, I mean, I think there's probably something you could, if you'd like to report that, you could, and then just possibly just frame it in the, in the, and give it some frame of reference, I guess, with regards to, say, site plan reviews you've been doing lately, or just other ordinance amendments you've been dealt with, you know, say, you know, crafting the language that way. Yeah, I mean, I think that's possible, something you'd like to address.
I don't know if the planning commission considers how our neighboring communities handle planning commission activities, and whether there are any particular observations we've considered as to how we progress in the future.
It's always good to take a look at and review your processes. That's why we, it's mandated by the state to review your master plan at a minimum. But if there's other policies you'd like to review, that's definitely possible. And that review typically does sometimes look at best practices of other communities. So if you wanted to consider that, that's something. But of course, it's one of those activities that you go through the process, you review and see what they do, and then you come to your own conclusions as to whether you need to make any changes, or if what they're doing is fine for them, but it's not for you. But it doesn't hurt at all to do kind of some type of review and analysis, if you'd like.
Does everyone on the commission have a copy of our last master plan? How many don't? Diane, you don't.
That wasn't that big a pamphlet we got.
Pardon me?
I have, I have one of those.
You don't have one that, okay, Randy doesn't, Eric, you have one, Frank, you have one.
I believe I got one of those.
So we need two, apparently, before we can really discuss it.
Absolutely, yeah, it would be, for the master plan review, it would be an agenda item. And just briefly, to, to just go over that process, usually what it would be is that I would just outline, what, what you're supposed to do is you take a look at each section and see if what, what's contained in each section of the master plan is still relevant today. Because while it was created, last amended in 2017, it was adopted in 2015, and then it was, I can't remember if it was an update to existing, or if it was, I believe it was brand new, right?
Yeah, I believe the last one was brand new.
Yeah, it was, the last one was brand new in 2015. So what you do is, once again, you just go through each chapter, and typically what we would do is McKenna would prepare a summary of each chapter, and then just identify items that we think might still be relevant, or might not, might no longer be relevant, you know, based on current economic conditions and existing conditions in the city. And that, of course, would just be an outline for you to take a look at and edit as to how you, your opinion as a, as a body, as to whether the current master plan is still appropriate. So it's, it's not creating a brand-new master plan, because that's a whole separate process. It's just a review. Because basically, the, at the end of the review process, you're supposed to determine if the current master plan is still, in effect, still serving you well, and that there's no additional changes need to be made, and that you, you believe it should be just re-accepted by the, re-accepted by the city, or if you feel like there might be some needs to do other planning activities. And that could range from doing a sub-area plan, making a minor amendment to the existing master plan, or actually doing a whole brand-new master plan. But that's about, once again, you go through the exercises of looking through the plan and seeing, all right, is everything still relevant? That's the big question.
Uh-huh, okay.
And so we would put it on the agenda and provide you with the draft outline, and then you can, after you, you read the chapters, you know, point out, yep, this is, these conclusions are correct, or, you know, you came to your own separate conclusion as to whether there's items that, whether the, once again, the chapters are relevant.
All right, well, is everyone in agreement with the, the report and the action plan? Or is there any changes that we want to make before it's presented to the council and the mayor?
Well, item number one is master plan review. So that might necessitate that we not present it tonight until we've had an opportunity to do that.
Well, that's an action plan, that's, this is something for us to do in the next year. So we wouldn't be doing it before we actually propose it. And the same as for the zoning ordinance amendments, I mean, there's, there's probably quite a few more, other than the ones we've discussed, that could be looked at. But this is an ongoing process that we can do throughout the year if we continue down that path. And then, training, just, training is always a good idea. Seeing what we have available to us going forward would be a, a good thing, I believe. So if, if there's no changes, or everyone is in agreement with this, we can recommend that our annual report and action plan be forwarded to the mayor and council. Or we can, if there's something else that we want to do with it, we should...
I have one more point of clarification, if I could. Mario references incorporating some or all of the action plan elements into the budget for the 2022 fiscal year, what does that mean?
That just means if, you know, during your discussions, you felt like it was necessary, like, you thought it would be helpful to put a, a budget number on certain items, you could put that in the report, and that would just be a recommendation to council as they craft their budget for the coming fiscal year. So for example, if you wanted a certain dollar amount to go towards training, you could put that number in this report, and it would be something the council would see. And they would just consider it as, as they go. And other things you can do, Frank, you mentioned that, some other things about including suggestions to the council about practices. If you wanted, you could add that as a, as a line item, or as a, an item under the action plan. It's like maybe draft a separate letter to the council, like later, at some point during the year, that either addressed, addresses, you know, the review policies and practices of the city, or...
That could be...
And, and, you know, something as a discussion.
Yeah, that can be part of our ongoing discussion to determine ways that we can improve business relations and what we can do to bring in new business. That, you know, we, that could be something that we can look at. And I suppose if we, if we like that idea, we can add it to our action plan as an ongoing item.
I mean, I know I'm the one who brought it up, I would just suggest that this body should be thinking about how technology is changing, the world is changing, the pandemic obviously changed everything, and I think it deserves, are our practices evolving in that direction?
Do you have a suggestion for language to add to the, the action plan?
Well, Mario, is that something that would be within the scope of what McKenna does for the city to provide us with your perspective on how we might be able to provide a more welcoming process?
Yes, it's definitely something that we could provide. It's, it's, sometimes it's, it varies in detail and level of complexity. It could be just start, from starting at introducing the ideas, and say, for example, I would think something where it's like providing you with tools to, to, or, excuse me, not tools, but topics to consider, or to keep in mind when you're reviewing plans, in terms of, you know, ways that would expedite processes, maybe, or something like that. Or it could get very detailed and go into analysis, like we could review other best practices of other communities, and then look at ways that, that could assist with businesses. It's, it straddles the line, I guess the issue is, is between planning and economic development. Because economic development is more about marketing the city, finding ways that, finding the, the needs of the current market, and then trying to identify locations in the, in the, in the city that could meet those emerging markets, like you said, as, as things change. Or, and also, maybe also identify current conditions in the city that need to be addressed. For example, like the, not the amount of square footage of retail we currently have zoned, and whether that needs to be, whether that needs to be addressed in either way, either increased or decreased, based on the market, you know. Your knee-jerk reaction might be that there's enough commercial zone property, because, you know, standard retail is, is being on the decline because of the pandemic, and because of, you know, online sales, and all these other external factors. And so the, a report could be done to, to indicate, you know, what's the best practice of moving forward. So those kind of exercises can, can run the gamut, from something that's very simple to something that can be pretty complex. And it's, like you said, it starts at planning and goes to economic.
Yeah, I, I think you're looking at something maybe making us more proactive than reactive, which is kind of how I see your activity is now, we react when someone comes in with a plan or an idea. But we, we're not proactive in trying to develop anything in advance. But I think that kind of crosses the line, like you said, because economic development might be more the venue of the DDA, or the city manager, possibly.
Absolutely, that's usually what it is.
I don't know if it's really our purview to...
Well, the way, definitely the way it would be your purview is that in the master plan. Because in the master plan, you have goals, objectives, and strategies and different policies. And if you can take a look at the policies, and as we go through the review process, going through that, if you feel like economic development isn't emphasized enough, that could be re-emphasized in the master plan, because that's definitely something that can be identified by the planning commission. Whether the planning commission undertakes those goals or not, that's up to the council, and the council, whether they, who they feel should be best suited to do that, whether it's the DDA or the administration. But definitely the planning commission could, if, if you feel like through, through your planning process, that economic development should take a forefront, then yeah, that's something that's definitely within your purview.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think that's something we should definitely look at, and I'm curious whether the DDA is doing this similar type of thing with agenda, five-year plans, and their outlook for the following year. In answer to the proactive, the last time we did a major deep dive on our zoning was down in the industrial park, because we recognized that the industrial park had remained essentially the same size for approximately 25 years, and that there was unused land there. And in doing so, we ended up with 21, I believe it was, site plan condominiums at a value of roughly $300,000 each, and a new soccer field. So where does the line lay between what we see with zoning, like you're talking about, and the master plan, if they in fact have one, with the DDA? Because sitting here right now, I can't tell you one single thing the DDA is doing or has done, nothing.
Diane?
This is a question for the mayor. Does, doesn't the DDA come to a city council meeting and present a master plan once a year?
They do a couple times a year.
Okay.
But they, and I agree, downtown development authorities to develop the downtown. And the DDA seems to be more of holding events, you know, Lucky Squirrel, Chili Cookup. Those are good, they bring people into our downtown for, for the day. But I personally, and other council members have said the same thing, would hope that the DDA would be more proactive in filling vacant buildings. Really, write a letter to Holiday Inn Express right now, saying this property's going on the market, we'd love for you to look at it, you know, but it seems more of an event coordinator than developer of the town.
That would seem to fall under parks and recreation, in my opinion.
And so, getting back to Frank's question about, you know, where, where does the planning commission fit in these things, it really is the master plan, because the master plan is your number-one priority. And the master plan is intended to outline broadly general policies for the city. And while the master, the planning commission is in charge of the creation process, obviously it's adopted by the entire city, and so the entire city is involved with it. So if you were to, I think the beginning of the process would be the master plan review, seeing what your opinion is on the economic development objectives listed there, and whether those ones that are listed right now are sufficient. And if they're not sufficient, you know, you could outline how to address it, whether it's amending the master plan, or just advising city council on ways to, that could help with economic development, being more proactive. But it does start with the master plan and reviewing.
Yeah, I think maybe that would be the best way to accomplish what you're talking about to improve.
Yeah, I just want to make sure our city's competing.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be a possibility of a visioning session with the DDA? Because we could co-develop things, or co-look at our master plan, for instance. I would like to think that the DDA is more an element of development, and less as social coordinator.
Absolutely, and so those type of exercises, like having brainstorming sessions, or, excuse me, visioning sessions, would be at the level when you, when they're looking at their master, their record, their master plan, excuse me, their development plan. Because the DDA does have a development plan that is supposed to list their activities, and it varies in, in complexity. Some get very specific with regards to their budget, and with regards to how much revenue will be coming in, because those can be utilized for various things, not just for annual budgets, but also for even bonds and other activities that could be utilized for, say, you know, facade grants, to helping the existing, existing businesses, and looking at creating more common parking, parking lots, dealing with those type of issues. But those are kind of specific to the DDA. I think you have to keep in mind that, while the downtown is the heart of the city, the planning commission has, has the jurisdiction over the entire city. So economic development goes from Inxter, on Ford Road, from Inxter all the way to Past Benoy. You know, we, you include, you know, Warren, and Cherry Hill, and Middlebelt, and Merriman, and every corner of the city. So the master plan would be where you would say, these are the ideas you'd like to see in the downtown area, and these are the other general economic development activities you want to see happen throughout the city. Because there are, the challenges and, and opportunities in the downtown are different than on the, on the, on the other parts of the city. And they might need different tools to, to assist the businesses in succeeding.
Yes.
Two things. One, I know that the last time I recall that we met with the DDA was when McDonald was, was wanting to break down across the corner. We did have, I thought, it was pretty productive, it was almost a town home, if I remember correctly. I don't know if we should extend something to that. Say, hey, let's sit down and try to get up, so we're all on the same page, heading in the right direction. Not saying we have to do it, but we could, it seemed like that was pretty productive.
Well, maybe before we get to that point, we could just ask them if they have any suggestions that they would like to see incorporated, and, you know, before we get to the...
Because if there's something that's holding them back, that we can correct when we go into our investigation, should make us aware.
Oh, for sure.
Something, question though, Mario, this, this annual report, do all, do all planning commissions in all cities do the same thing? Is that public?
Yes.
Is information public for all this, or are we...
Yes, it is.
I wonder if that would be something for us to take a peek at, see what everybody else is doing. We don't have to copy anyone, but, you know, just a heads up.
Well, it would be useful for going ahead in the future, possibly, because it might give us some indication of what they're doing, what directions they're taking, and...
Because like I said, we don't have to follow it, but just see what they're doing.
Absolutely.
You know, that was all I had.
Well, do you think that your ideas can maybe be incorporated into the ideas of when we review the master plan?
Yeah, I appreciate the commission's dialogue on the matter, and I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay. Well, we need to, do we need to make any changes in the report or the action plan?
Well, I'll just go back to my, I'm sorry, my second question on the budget. Should we strike the reference to budget? Because I, unless I missed it, I didn't see anything where we're asking the, the mayor or council to...
Do we currently have a budget other than your true salaries? That is a good question, I do not know. I mean, I don't believe we do anymore. We used to have a small budget, but I don't believe we do anymore.
We had a training budget probably 15, 18 years ago.
Yeah.
Which was very useful, and utilized it quite frequently.
Well, we're asking all of the action plan elements into the budget. So the action plan elements, is there something we're specifically asking council to place into the budget?
Well, I think training would probably be the one item that would affect the, the budget. And also, if we, if we have Mario do any particular work on making changes or researching, that could affect our budget too, our general budget. But does that reference, take care of that? The training and any additional work that would need to be done to, for researching and updating the master plan?
Yeah, the way I read that, or intended that sentence, I should say, to be, is to, to give, point out to the council that if they see any need to assign a dollar amount to any of those tasks, then they can choose to do so, that, you know, that it deems appropriate. So mainly just letting them decide if they, they need it.
Yeah, we don't have any dollar figures for any of those items anyway, do we?
No, not at this point in time. I mean, usually, master plan review, a couple thousand. The zoning ordinance amendments are part of the McKenna contract, that we provide the planning services to the city. So we have a certain amount for onsite office hours, but then we have another amount for planning and zoning administration. So all the zoning ordinance amendments we've been doing so far are under that contract for the, for that, that portion. And it covers it, because we make sure to provide as much revisions to, to allocate it, that are allocated to us. So for the, for the, for those two items, they pretty much would fall under your current allocation to McKenna. And then it's only the training for members that's really something that's not, that I don't know if it's currently allocated.
Right, it wouldn't be included. Right, wouldn't be included in that.
Right, because it might be that the city has a general education fund for all boards and commissions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
We just talked about training for our boards and committees. We have money for training. If there's training you guys want to go to, we will send you to it. You got to remember, a budget is always proposed spending. Even if we didn't have a budget, at the next council meeting, we could amend our budget another $2,000 to give to the planning commission. If there's training for you guys, we'll send it.
Okay. I think that pretty much covers it. Is there anything else?
Nope.
Does, okay, does someone wish to make a motion to forward the, the report to the mayor and council?
I'll make a motion to forward the report to city, to mayor and city council.
Second.
Any comments or discussion on the motion? Would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner Felitis?
Aye.
Commissioner Walls?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye.
Okay, next item is zoning ordinance amendments. This is the discussion of the next set of amendments to address action. Mr. Ortega, you want to go over those?
Uh, yes. So if you, having to recall, last year, I presented a memo similar to this, just outlined the various topics that were either brought up during the course of events in day-to-day in the planning office, or other items that are listed in the master plan that need to be addressed. And just asked that you point out, you know, identify and prioritize which ordinances you'd like to address. So similarly to here, you know, these are just four different issues that seem to be either come up from time to time, or just a personal observation I, I had. And so, it's something where we could consider these ordinance amendments, or there's other, or other issues that you'd like to have the planning commission address. And then you prioritize the, the, prioritize which ones are most important, and then I would begin the process of creating new, new ordinances, or amendments to the ordinance. So the first being the lighting ordinance. You know, personally, I feel that the light, lighting ordinances have become more and more specific with regards to addressing that consistent issue of adequate lighting at commercial sites, while not negatively impacting residences. Obviously, it's a big issue for us, because we have our residences directly adjacent to commercial uses. But I, one other thing that's been pointed out is that sometimes, when you're driving around at night, you kind of notice in certain parts of the township, of the city, that, you know, sometimes it's pretty dark where some of the businesses are. And that's because they tend to just turn off all the lights. So there are different topics that we could, for example, sometimes having a minimum light level at properties, you know, on commercial properties. That's something that, that other communities have, and they notice, you know, when you, when you're driving in other communities, you might not notice it, but it's something that makes it a little bit more vibrant. And then other things would be just tweaking the language to make sure that the residents are protected with the most latest and greatest of lighting standards. Making sure, it's things I put in the, in my review letters, but if we codify it in the, in the zoning ordinance, it'd be helpful. Making sure everything's shielded and directed downward, providing graphics to specifically show that, so that way, all the new light, lights that come in, once again, protect residences. Other things, just as an example, is that sometimes the variance review standards, sometimes they might overlap each other. I think we have like, I want to say twelve standards for the variances, which tend to be, make the review letters extensive, where they, they duplicate the, the points they're trying to make. So it's just something to consider is about reviewing those, just reviewing those standards, seeing if they need to be amended or not. Maybe they're all necessary, and you don't have to change anything. But it's a discussion if you wanted to have it or not. But one other thing that is, seems to be a hot topic still, is the lot coverage and impervious surface on residential homes. Some community, some homes tend to, we keep getting questions about how wide people's driveways can be. Can they pave in front of their house for their extra cars? And, and our ordinances, you know, maybe it's time to look at that language to see what we need to shore up, to make sure that the amount of green spaces is preserved. But then also look at, because right now, we don't regulate, we only consider building footprints, both prints of the principal house and any accessories with lot coverage. Some other communities consider using hard surface, like the total hard surface, and regulating that. So that's something, if you wanted to, we could talk about. And then revising the sign ordinance, there was, several years ago now, the Supreme Court came down with a decision that rendered most, most sign ordinances, not obsolete, but, but no longer valid, because they, they feel that the only time, that a, that a, that a sign ordinance should only regulate the time, place, and manner of where signs can be located. So it goes into this idea that, for example, like, we regulate our current signs by, like, whether it's a real estate sign, or whether it's a yard sale sign. Well, according to this new Supreme Court standard, technically, you're not supposed to be looking at the content of the sign. It's about how the, you can regulate its location, you can regulate how long that sign can be there, you can regulate its sign and, size and area, but you're technically not supposed to specify that based on the type of sign. So there are way, so other communities have chosen to address this issue, some other communities have not. Because, and, and to this point, we haven't had any challenges to how we regulate them. But at a minimum, I do think there's some tweaks that need to be happened, that need to happen to the sign ordinance. For example, about political signs. And just not, once again, not to get into the weeds on that, but just identifying the, for example, putting a timeframe on when political signs can go up, before an election and after election.
Thought we had.
I thought there was.
I thought so too, but we, like, during the last election, we were trying, there was, they just left it up the whole time, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, definitely needs to be looked at. I agree.
So those are just four ideas in no particular order of importance, just looking for, you can provide me with direction. And also, there's other issues you think need to be addressed that aren't on this list.
I have a question regarding that sign ordinance. So are you talking about even a timeframe, you like, you know, people have yard signs like, support our local police or fire department? Are you talking about those type of signs as well? They can only be up for a certain amount of time?
Well, you would decide that, and actually, that's one, actually, that's a good point, because technically, those don't believe there's a current ordinance language that addresses that. So actually, an amendment would just make sure, like, the easiest way to do it. And the good thing about this content, it's called content neutral standards. So the good thing about content neutral standards is that you could say, single-family homes may have one sign on their property at all times.
Okay.
And so therefore, you don't get into, you know, the content at all, you don't worry about what it says, and you don't get, deal with that. It's just, as a property owner, you are allowed one sign. And then you would choose.
We could also regulate the size of the sign.
Correct, exactly. You regulate the size of that sign, you can regulate its location, you know, making sure it's not blocking any traffic. And then that's, then that would be it, you know. But you regulate its time, place, and manner. So manner being size. You can also regulate the lighting of those things too, as well. That's part of the manner aspect. But, um, yeah, that could be something that, and that's a good thing too, I think, because then you codify it. You go, great. So that way, neighbors can't say, they shouldn't have a sign, and if we can't find an ordinance that says they can or they can't, then we have to try and rely on common sense.
Yeah, something like that would simplify it, make it easier to enforce. I think enforcement is probably a big issue with all of our ordinances. You know, no matter what we pass in the way of an ordinance, if we can't enforce it, it's not going to be any good, so.
Yes, and the ordinance enforcement officers were the ones that brought to my attention that we didn't really have anything, that I couldn't find it at that time, about the time of political signs.
Yes, Mayor?
Mayor, I get calls from, this is something for you guys to think about. From business owners, like at these strip malls that sit off the road a bit. They say people drive up on Ford Road or Middlebelt or Inxter, they don't even know we're here. So they want to put a sandwich board sign out. Well, that, when people are trying to pull out on Inxter Road or wherever, blocks their vision, somebody can get T-bone. But they just want to do it for like, grand opening for thirty days or sixty days, and I think they can buy a permit.
They can get a temporary sign permit for that, I believe.
Right. Or some of them put up flags, which is also, I guess, that's like a sign, really.
It is.
It's letting you know there's something, you know, a sign. People ask me all the time, why, why are you guys so hard on us? People don't know we're here, could you guys relook at this? So I don't know what the answer is, but I do get asked that a lot, for these, especially the strip businesses that are off the road. And I think that's why you see, because they're only allowed to do so many days a year. That's why you see the income tax people hiring a guy to walk up and down Ford Road, because he can do that every day of the year. They're paying that guy just to walk. That's really a sign, but it's not permanent sign. And, you know, income tax is only a certain time of year. As a matter of fact, it ends tomorrow. But they use those guys walking up, you know, Liberty Tax, you've seen them. And I think that's why they, they use a, a person, because they can't have that thing out there from January to September fifteenth. So I don't know what the answer is, but that's something you guys may want to look at, the flags, the signs, the, you know. Especially for businesses that, that sit off the road a ways, and people doing forty, forty-five miles an hour. Can go back to work every day, not even know there's a tax place in there. You're, uh, now there's a hearing aid place right next to the janitor's room.
Yeah, well, that, that's fine, but the first guy puts one out, puts a sandwich board sign out to attract attention, and then his neighbor puts one out to attract attention.
I get it.
And then everybody's got one out, so you're back to where you began.
No, and I get it, it is a traffic hazard. I'm just saying, is there anything that you come up with that you resolve that, or thinking outside of the box, to help these business owners, without putting a sandwich board out there every day, and then the neighbor does the same thing? But, you know, I don't know what, what it is, but that is a common complaint I get as mayor. And I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I'm sure every businessman wants to have his business in bright lights all the time, so people notice it.
Right. But if you're Speedway or Big Boy, you're right up on Ford Road, everybody sees you. I'm talking about the ones that are in the strip mall off the road, that, they're, they're the ones complaining, pulling over here. And I don't know what the answer is, I'm just, you know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, we, we want to be, we want them to be able to have a sign and have their business prosper.
Yeah.
But at the same time, we want to maintain a certain.
Look at Pookie Do and Chicken Avenue, they sit behind McDonald's.
Yeah.
Proclean, I mean, people, traffic on Ford Road don't see them.
No.
How many see him on Middlebelt? Maybe Chicken Avenue, because it's on the end. But how do you help those type of businesses with signs? That, that's all I'm saying, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what the answer is, that's something maybe to put heads together, think outside of the box. But we definitely don't want sandwich board signs out there, and I get that. I'm just bringing up a point, it's a common complaint that I've gotten for several years that's been made, for those business owners that sit off the road. And I don't know what their answer is.
I think if we looked at that and figured out the distance between the driver and the front of most vehicles, and had the sign set back X amount of distance from the entrance to the road surface, then people could drive up and be just in front of it, and there wouldn't be a blind spot like you talk about, as one, for instance.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Well, are, so you're looking at, starting with these four items as a beginning place. And when we get through these, then we can proceed to others, possibly.
Yes, and I, and like, and if, once again, if there's others that you think are more priority than these, just, please let me know, or else, or else we're not, we can tackle these right now, or?
Does anyone have anything in mind that they see as a big priority, that they would like to be addressed right up front?
Maybe number two, because you had mentioned there's like twelve or fifteen ordinance, maybe try and narrow it down, make it easier on you. Go over that first.
The, I think, I think before we look at the variant standards, we should possibly include the CVA in that discussion, because they're the ones that deal with those standards. We don't really do that here.
Our biggest problem is always parking, too. It's always a.
Parking is always an issue. Nobody ever has enough.
Yeah. So I don't know if there's anything to change there, but.
I will say that even though we did do some minor tweaks to it just recently, and we did do a, the, the modified minimum parking standards based on the mix of uses on a site, I did use that a couple times, and it did help out the site by minimizing the required parking. But the calculate, the, the current standards that we use for calculating the minimum required are relatively dated. And so, it could be something that could be looked at, in terms of the minimum required parking for every class of business, the class of use, from apartment, for example.
Well, I would think there are most standards that apply, you know, kind of universally in that respect, that we could look at and compare to what we're currently using.
Yes, the Institute of Transportation Engineers does a parking analysis study. They update it relatively frequently. Some of their data is somewhat outdated in itself, because, or doesn't take a lot of samples. But it is the industry standard for determining the minimum number. Then if we looked at parking, we would just take a look, compare our standard to what the ITE standard is, and then note where we might need to make changes.
There's probably something like that for every, every one of these, right?
For some, for some more than others, the ITE is definitely a standard that is used by every community to at least start out with, when it comes to parking. And then they adjust it based on their current situations, like, like for us, you know, because a lot of the commercial properties don't go that deep off of Ford Road or off of the main primary road, sometimes those standards might actually be too much. And it might hinder a business from, like, a certain type of business from operating, because then suddenly, they can only fit on sites that are like, I want to know, like, say, it needs, they need at least an acre, and they can only get like, assemble half an acre, because the lot doesn't go deep enough. So, but it's definitely, it's definitely the starting port that everybody does. Lighting things, there are different lighting groups out there that have different standards. But they, and they have model ordinances, but, you know, sometimes they have a particular objective, like, based on the size of the community.
Yeah, one of the things about lighting is, I, I couldn't find anything in our ordinance that required a photometric plan.
Right.
And I, I think that should be added to the required information that has to come with the site plan.
Mm-hmm. Isn't that part of the check sheet that was developed a few years back?
Well, it might be part of a check sheet, but it's not part of the ordinance.
Oh, we're always asking for.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
We've been, I have been requesting that, and most modern, or, excuse me, I should say, most recent applicant, applicants typically provide them, but it's also not a requirement, so I haven't been pushed back yet. If they push back at me, then I might not.
You don't have much to stand on if they push back, yeah.
Correct, right.
So that, that might be a good thing to do. And I'm sure there might be other lighting rigs that we need to talk about. As far as number two, the, the variant standards, I would like to maybe replace that with the parking issue.
Okay.
And look at that, because I think that. I think that would have a more, more of an impact with, uh, our business community.
Yeah. Yep.
So I, I'm, I'm all in favor of, uh, going with these four, except, uh, the addition of parking at, at number two and the removal of the, uh, variance standards until we can possibly talk about that together with the, uh, ZBA at a later date. Anybody else? We don't need, we don't, do we need a vote for this, or?
No, you can just.
Just be the recommendation.
Yeah.
I, I think if we go with those four and, uh, replace number two with parking, then we can move forward with that.
Okay. So I would begin the, the review process and, um, present you with draft language when the meeting has time, you know, based on our other agendas.
Right, yeah.
As we move forward.
Fit it into the schedule.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay, moving on, we have commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters.
The mixed-use overlay that we added to the agenda.
Oh, the mixed-use overlay, yes.
So, uh, so just, just, um, the, if you recall, one of our last zoning ordinance amendments was the creation of a mixed-use overlay district. They would allow, who they would give property owners the, the option, but not the obligation, to allow for residential uses on the second floor and above.
Correct.
So the one issue is just we never, never came to a conclusion as how you felt the, where the location of where you'd like that overlay to be looked, be placed.
I thought we discussed that, and we selected a section of, uh, zoning areas that were C-one and C-two, was it? Along Ford Road.
Mm-hmm. Uh, and so would you want, and I know we talked a little bit about, um,
I believe.
how far off, so would it just be all the C-one and C-two on Ford?
No, we were only talking about, uh, from Brant down to, I believe it was Shatka or Dillon. Possibly Dillon.
Okay.
Just, we were starting with that area.
Yeah, we're gonna start small and blow it up with it.
As things progressed, we, we wanted to, uh, possibly expand in the future.
Well, we might go to Shatka if those are the boundaries, because we have a, uh, multiple doctor's office right there in the corner.
Well, it's not a, yeah, I mean, it's not a, uh, a requirement. It's just a possibility for the, for that area.
Okay. It was mainly focused on, on the west side of downtown, is that right?
Yeah, if we only go to Shatka, that's a two-block area. I, we, we didn't go all the way down to, uh, Merriman. But I think, I, I don't know, what does everybody think? I, I think, uh, going down to Dillon in those appropriate businesses would be, would be an adequate area to start out. We wanted to, uh, start out in a modest way, I think. And also along with that, the central business district already allows for it, so.
Correct.
So that when you include all of that, you have, you have a broader area.
I think that photo den is on Shatka, and aren't they doing apartments?
Yes.
Yes, they are.
They're west of Shatka, I believe, on that corner.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so if we stopped at Shatka, they wouldn't be in the district. But we can, we can, if we go down to Dillon, they would be included as well as a dental office on that side, and.
And the vacant, uh, piece of property next to the, in that mid-block, I always forget, is that the VFT, was that VFT? No, that was, that was Knights of Columbus.
Yeah, that's a big vacant piece of property now that could be developed in that respect.
Mm-hmm.
Was it one of the, uh, main ideas, uh, behind that in order to allow for residential on the second floor?
Yeah. Yeah, that was the, the primary, uh, design, but it could also be in the back, if I remember right.
Yes.
Depending on, on your description or definition of it, that, that we had.
Well, then we, we possibly may want to include the former Foxhole. And we may want to, uh, include Castelli to allow.
Well, if we go down to Dillon.
Well, one's already going that direction.
If we go down to Dillon, I think we'll catch those.
I thought Castelli goes the other side of Dillon.
It's the other side of Dillon. It's Dillon and Merriman. It's across the street from King Kong.
Oh, the north side, that's right.
I grew up on Harris and Dillon, so I, I know Dillon.
You know that corner.
That's my neighborhood, I know my white act, I know the buildings.
Okay.
Castelli's right across the street from King Kong.
Well, to include everybody, we could go down to Merriman, but then we'd have to, uh, exclude some of the, uh, businesses that are in that area, such as the rental place. And I'm not, I, I don't recall the language that we had as far as excluding different types of businesses.
We did exclude any auto-oriented businesses, um, and.
So there's a mechanic shop on the other side of the street.
Right.
And there's a vacant bar over there.
Yeah, that definitely needs redevelopment. Um, you could put it just on the north side of Ford, down to Merriman. Because I don't know if, uh.
That would be, that would be the auto center on the corner there, too.
Yeah, but. But then definitely the auto center would, is, would not be allowed to, because it's already, the ordinance doesn't allow it anyway.
When this was in its heyday, in this area, speaking of Detroit, you had second-floor residential, above bars, restaurants. I don't know that there was too much in the way of exclusions. You had a lot of second-floor residential above.
Yeah, in the city, but I think when Garden City was developed, we didn't have much of that.
Well, by the time we got developed, I think it was on its way out.
Yeah.
But it's coming back in a lot of places. You, you're seeing it in Dearborn, you're seeing it in Ferndale. Uh, it's never left Ann Arbor.
No, there's a lot of cities that still embrace that, which is why we were looking at including it.
Could we not go to Dillon and reassess later in the event that there's demand?
Yeah, I mean, we can always expand it.
Yes.
So if we go down to Dillon and stop there, I think that's.
Okay.
What about if we did it under a special site plan? And, and just made it from, um, corner to corner, and then review it on an individual basis, uh, as it comes up?
Well, we have, what, what we want to do is first just define the boundaries of the overlay. Right now, we're talking about C-one and C-two along Ford Road here from Brant down to, and at the other meeting, we were talking either Shatka or Dillon. So whichever one we want to decide on, I guess.
And then the overlay, once the overlay is created, then anybody that would like to develop it that way would have to come to you for site plan review and approval. But then the overlay allows them to just do it under a straight site plan approval, not any kind of special use or PUD or anything like that.
We currently show fourteen different zoning uses here. Are, are we not carving this piece of the pie up in awful small little increments, awful specifically small increments?
Well, I would definitely think that, um, that's a good discussion to have for the master plan review, because the master plan does call for the elimination of some of these districts. If you recall, we did, we are eliminating the office. Um, and then, one thing I hadn't seen in there is that there even was consideration of possibly merging C-one and C-two. Or either C-two and C-three, I can't recall. But then, uh, you know, oh, I think the vehicular parking district was something that, that was being considered as, as being necessary or not. You know, are they?
Well, the office is still on this map.
Yeah, so that, that was going to be, my next point is that, um, so we've adopted, we've, or we have eliminated the O-one within the ordinance, but we do need to rezone those properties that were zoned O-one to a new district. Um, the majority of them, uh, because we've been doing an analysis of each site, the majority of them do, uh, fit in a, in a C-one designation, but there are a few that might need to be, uh, a different designation. So at the next meeting, I was going to present you, um, an analysis for, uh, a new, a re, a citywide rezoning of those properties. And you, because based on the quantity of the properties, we can do it as one master, one zoning map revision. So that would be something that's going to, we'll be discussing at the next meeting. So that would eliminate the O-one off the map and change the zoning designations of those one, O-one properties.
We're talking about merging C-one and C-two?
I can't remember if C-one and C-two or C-two and C-three. But it was talking about that in the master plan, and then also, like you said, talking about getting rid of the, the, um, vehicular parking district.
Chairperson May, um, just to clarify for the commission, um, in terms of mapping out, you know, the area, the language in the ordinance that we passed, um, basically identifies, um, the mixed-use overlay district as being a map zoning district that overlays the C-one and C-two districts along a specific corridor. So even on your map, if there's a C-three or something else, you know, one outlier that's in there, it wouldn't be able to be.
It wouldn't be part of the district.
It wouldn't overlay on any of the others.
It would be an island in the middle of the district.
Correct.
Yeah. This is, yeah, this is not, this is not another district, though, we're talking about. This is just an overlay on existing districts.
The reason I bring that up is somebody, somebody that doesn't live in Garden City, a business person, an entrepreneur, coming to town and saying, what can I do here? How could I invest my money? To have so many, so many specifically stated individual partials, I think makes it difficult if we, and maybe that's the clarification we need, uh, C-one and C-two only and not C-three. But I think it would give somebody not familiar with this area more clarification to say, Ford Road from Middle Belt to Merriman, uh, Middle Belt from, from Warren to Henry, or Marquette, and being able to simply state, uh, corridors where, where the overlay would be possible. And then.
We're not doing that big of an overlay. We're only doing an overlay along Ford Road.
For an example.
Our overlay will be a section of Ford Road from where the CBD stops down to Dillon or Shatka. That's what we decided on. Do we want to make it Dillon or Shatka? I think.
I would, I would say Dillon.
Yeah, I agree. I think if we go down to Dillon, the individual businesses will dictate what happens in a lot of cases, but I think we'll be, we'll be just fine if we do that. And we can use this as a learning experience to see how things go while trying to develop some mixed-use properties. If it goes well there, we can look at expanding it into some other areas.
That was the initial discussion, I think, when we had.
Yes.
Check it out, and let's see how it goes.
Do we, do we need a, a vote to decide the boundaries at this time, or did we do that before?
Um, I think, I, I think I have the direction, so definitely on Ford Road from, from Brant to Dillon. And then what it can be is that the next meeting, uh, when we discuss the O, changes to the O-one properties, it'll be included on the map, on the draft map. And so it'll be all, so when we drop the new zoning map, uh, it'll all be.
Do it all at once.
Do it all at once.
Okay. Is there, is there anything else we need to do with this?
No, nothing like this, other than, as I mentioned, at our next meeting, I'll present you with, uh,
Okay, good.
changes to the O-one.
Moving on then. Commissioner's comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Diane, do you have anything?
No, I, you know.
Eric?
Uh, I would like to know more about that C-one, C-two, or C- because I actually have some personal issues going on with that, so I was more curious than anything.
Yeah, just, um, from the master plan, when it's under the recommended revisions of the zoning ordinance and map, it does say eliminate the C-two, VP, and the O-one district, and incorporate the uses and regulations into the C-one or C-three business as appropriate. So the long-term vision would be to, to reduce the number of districts more and, and have it just have two commercial districts.
Yeah, over at the corner where I have that building, they, it's where C-one, and next door is the C-two, so some people have been eyeing it, and the zoning has been getting in the way a little bit. So that's something. The guy in the corner had offered a million and a half for that auto place.
Wait, where is this?
At Sheriff Hill and Merriman.
Okay. Wow.
He didn't take it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but there are people looking over there, and they, but they need more space. So I know Walmart looked at it years ago, ten, fifteen years ago, or, uh.
Walgreens.
Walgreens, sorry. Yeah. No, I think they're maybe trying to compete with CBS or something.
They don't like beating across the street from each other.
Okay.
To the mayor, uh, how did you find out about LA Fitness and?
He's got an email a lot.
Is that right? Did they, what did they offer as a reason?
They said that we're putting back on market, that's all it said.
Yeah.
COVID price matched that.
I will say that.
I saw that coming.
I think we ought to redouble our efforts. Uh, we've already talked about it tonight, about a liaison or whatever you want to call it, a visioning session with DDA. That's an awful big piece of property, an awful lot of nothing sitting there, and it, it looks like hell.
I think they get, the DDA might benefit more from hearing it from the council than from us.
Uh, I don't think we should be, um, I think we should.
I don't want to be left out of the discussion, but I don't think we're in a position where we can tell the DDA what they should be doing.
No, 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 no. That visioning session is not dictating.
I know.
It's seeing what each other's ideas on something are. When they didn't break up the concrete, the pad, and they. When they didn't break up the concrete, the pad, and they've had weather enough to do that, because we know what the frost laws are, when they didn't take advantage of those frost laws right off the bat last year and this year, a guy can drive a dump truck and work a dozer and a mask, and COVID doesn't make any difference. So this writing's been on the wall for quite a while. I was hoping that wouldn't be the case, but that needs to be looked at long and hard, and we need to be dynamic on it as a city, whoever takes the ball and runs with it, because we need to get something in there on a par with what we had or better. I like the hotel idea. That could be a springboard for a lot of other businesses in the area.
And we'll say the building department was relatively diligent on trying to just get updates from LA Fitness as we went, and their consistent, our update was the third or fourth time we contact, you know, we contacted them three times, and maybe the fourth time they'd respond and say, due to the COVID outbreak, we're pausing the development. And that's after the, after the demo. And so then after a few more months, you know, three or four emails later, then they eventually just said, no, we're pausing it, so.
Yeah. On the subject of hotels in that area, would our height restrictions be a problem for putting a hotel there?
It would be under standard development. I would, I presume that the P, they would just go PUD.
It would be planned development?
Yeah, and PUD would allow for that type of use.
Okay.
But that doesn't need to say that we might not need, we might need to look at our ordinance regulations to confirm that, and then possibly modify those regulations to, to allow for something like a four-story hotel.
Okay.
I'm all set, thank you.
Ready? Eric?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. The only thing I was curious about was the, the lighting at the gas station at Ford and Henry, or?
Yes, I've met on-site a couple of times with the property owner and with the business owner. Their contention the whole time has been that they think that the intersection, excuse me, the driveway, because of what Michigan Department of Transportation required them to design that driveway, they keep saying that larger vehicles hit the curb, and so that's why people need these extensive lights. Doesn't, doesn't, you know, in my mind justify the lights that are in the back of a site.
Their extensive lights haven't stopped a couple of people that I saw from driving over the curb and getting stuck in that little hole.
Yes, exactly. And so we've been on there multiple times, myself, the building official has also given them a laundry list of additional items. We'll say the last time we went out there, they did, they're gonna be, they said they're gonna now, with the temperature changes, they are gonna be filling in those landscape islands, putting in a sign, signage, full sign. We approved their permit for the full sign a long time ago, they're finally doing it. And then at a minimum, I'm asking them to angle the lights downward because to be in compliance with, like, directed down.
I don't like the idea of angling them down, because they, that's subject to change at any time.
Right.
Just like, a few nights ago, I went by and the lights were turned off. And they were off for a couple of nights, and I went by last night, I think it was, and they were back on again. So on and off, if the lights are still there, they'll turn them on when they feel like it. I think they need to be removed. They weren't part of the site plan, and they should stick to the site plan. That's the only thing I have. Next regular planning commission meeting, Thursday, May 12, 2022. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.